It is nine thirty?
Well, I say let's get this party going.
Alrighty, good morning. I call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show it's nine thirty a.m. All five members of the court are present. We're streaming live on our YouTube channel and if you're watching and you'd like to call in and make a comment, you may call in on nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for our invitation and pledge for show courtesy honors today.
Let us pray. Grace the family, Father, we just thank you for another beautiful day in Young County, Graham, Texas. Father, we just ask that you would be with us today. Help us to make decisions, Father. Give us wisdom and guidance and direction, Father. Or we pray for those that have lost their loved ones and those that are sick and hurting, Father. We just pray to lift them up. Lord, we just thank you for grace, Father. Or we thank you for this day and we just ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Scott. We'll move to item number three, public comments and announcements. I've got a few. First, the fire truck that we purchased for the city of Graham to use to respond to county emergencies is in. They're wanting to do a picture next Monday. Hopefully, it's gonna be in the afternoon, but they'd like us all, it'll be a city-county picture at the Graham Fire Department where the fire truck will be shined up and ready for a show and tell. Another announcement, they had the summer concert series last night on the square, or Saturday night on the square. The next one's gonna be June twenty eighth and the band's gonna be the Lady Plainsman. And then my final announcement is tonight at the NCTC cafeteria at seven p.m. they're gonna have a presentation on screwworms and the danger that screwworms are posing to Texas and the United States. It's gonna be presented by Dr. Greg Bunker, Dr. Greg Bunker with the Texas Farm Bureau.
Binger.
Binger?
Binger.
Binger. Sorry, I mispronounced that. I can see where you get Binger out of that. Alright. Any other public comments?
Yes, we'll bring up a comment on the elevator nearing its final deal. They'll be testing today, so if we're in here and you hear the alarm go off, they're testing it. They've got the inspector down there right now on that deal. So we should be within the day or tomorrow, it should be operational up and running.
Okay.
Can we move item number twelve up to the top and then we can have some public comments on what a lot of people are here for?
Okay, we can definitely do that. Are there, before we get into the RV park, are there any other public comments about anything besides different than that? Alright.
I do have a question.
Please.
I don't know if you can answer it or not. It just came to me. When they have the cannons and crawfish and that is sponsored by the Graham Chamber, is that correct?
Yes. Well, it's a joint venture between them and us.
Okay, so the county does get some of the revenue from crawfish. Is it split right down the middle?
It's, no, because there's so many expenses. Like, we don't actually have any of the expenses, so a lot of that money goes to pay the expenses, but we get a nice percentage of that money when it's all set up.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
And then we pay the chamber a fee to kind of organize that stuff and then they do other things promoting the county, putting advertisements and Texas highlights and stuff like that to try to generate some buzz. Any other non-RV comments? Alright, well, let's move, let's go ahead and move number twelve to the top. Discuss and consider and review plans for an RV park at Fort Belknap. Commissioner, this is your item.
Okay, so as we have purchased the land across the street from the RV, from the Fort Belknap grounds, the idea had been brought up that we use the hotel occupancy tax money dollars to fund a fourteen-spot RV space that would be considered for using during events and then available to folks to rent on a minimal stay basis, two or three days. And I guess the, I've gotten calls, texts, emails, concerns. The idea was to move the RVs from inside the grounds for historical aesthetics to the outside of the park. And so we're just in a planning discussion phase, and so that's why we have y'all here today to plan and discuss.
Did you call the gentleman who does the Fort Trail?
I did.
Did he look at the plans and give you some comments?
He gave me some great ideas and comments and he was very supportive. It was a great idea. As I've had multiple people agree that it would be great for generating revenue, being able to offset some of the costs that we have on the fort. We have approximately seventy-five to a hundred campers a year, I'm estimating now, that try to stay inside the park. Inside the park RV spots are minimal electricity, no water, and no sewer. So it's very difficult and the way they're parked in there, it's just right on the edge of the ground, so it would be a nice upgrade for people to come and stay and generate a little revenue. Besides the upkeep, there would be some upkeep as y'all have asked and we don't exactly know what that looks like yet.
So Jim will take care of the RV park?
He'll be responsible.
He'll be responsible?
With no increase to the budget?
I'm sorry?
With no increase to the budget?
No, there'll be, there will be an increase to the budget for this.
Well, is there a reason you couldn't put it inside the park by Jim's, where the house is, over where the baseball field is instead of putting it over there? And that way, it is right there for him to take care of and he would be there and he would have the visibility versus he's not when it's across the road.
That's a very good point and I think that's something that we could look into.
I just feel like, because I see your face, Mr. Wilding, you're like, I don't understand. As former curators of the fort and being there, there are, I believe, three RV connections right now that are not up to what they need to be for power. There is no sewer, there is no water. You could much cheaper update those and put in more over there. It is close to the house, it's just a little bit further west. That is a whole area back behind the dress museum and that baseball field area that could have enough slots. Maybe not fourteen, but enough. And then it wouldn't necessarily be something where you would have squatters, that you would end up with a problem on down the road. None of y'all, as we discussed in the hall, ever intend for it to be that in the future. But as one of our ladies that's here today that will be living very, right next door to where y'all are proposing to put it, she has ran one at Paulson Kingdom. She knows what you get into. That way, it can be looked after. You're already allowing them to dig on the grounds, which was never allowed before. When they put these in, they can dig whatever, put the lines in, and you may find all kinds of artifacts at that point. But you're not gonna ruin the historical value any more than what's already been ruined now by events and allowing them to dig and people coming and going. It's not gonna change. It's just gonna lower the cost of taxpayers. The maintenance would be right there under his nose where he can see it day in and day out. You will not bother the neighbors. It would be a much better solution.
My question is, I know y'all checked with Fort Belknap electric. My understanding, you have not discussed about the water. There is issues with water and electricity. I personally can say, I get blips all the time. They got so bad, I had to get a Genarak to be able to maintain electric power to my house. So I have an issue with the fact, you're talking about putting in, that's more electric, that's more water. You're talking about a septic system now, that when you go look at that, you can only have so much on a septic system. So I'm just curious if y'all really delved into and got all the information and the facts on what this pertains to.
The answer is probably saying, no, we have not talked to all, and we have not considered all of those. That's why we're here today and I appreciate all your input and I will take it into consideration.
Now, hopefully, with more use, they would upgrade those lines and that's what you would hope would happen.
Yes, Ms. Andrew.
From what I understand, y'all are proposing to set it, make that RV park right next door to me.
And the first person I talked to was a fence builder. Because we do understand your concerns and I agree that anybody here would not want an RV park in their backyard. So we want to address any concerns that the citizens that live close by have and we want to take all that into consideration.
Well, and also, another big consideration or concern to me is the long-term effect that it would have. Even the value of my property gone down. No, I don't have a whole lot, but I'm there by myself. Ms. Britton lives right there by herself. That's a big concern. And we are already, well, you know, that somebody stole my tailpipe right out, under my carport out. And she has-
I've been broke into before.
So, and we're right there on the fort. Where you would think more people would be, but they have already started that before. I've had to build a gate to keep them from coming in my yard. They've done that. I don't want it right next door to me. And even with the fence there, that's not gonna change. I know what it is to run an RV park, Scott. Even though you have short-term stays, somebody's gonna move in there, take the wheels off of their RV and say, no, I haven't broken down, I can't move. I've had that happen. Then the law is on their side, not the county's.
I think all those are valid concerns and from our standpoint, you know, we look at the revenue side of it and how we want to help the citizens of Young County and lower taxes and make things better so we don't have such a burden on the fort. And so we look at it, you know, as people come in and stay in and inviting other people to come to the fort, enumerating some traffic in and out of there.
You won't even consider the burden you put on people around the fort? Would you even consider selling the front acre to me just so that I would have that buffer?
What do you mean by the front acre?
There was two acres.
The buffers open between our house and our property is what she talked about.
We'd be at five acres. Have we had two acres, hang on a second?
That would at least be a buffer between me and whatever you do.
And when we bought that land, there was, I'm just trying to remember, it's been a while. Was that a five acre square that we bought? Six acre square? And then there's two, two acre squares?
The two acres are right next door to me.
And so we could, the one in the middle, we could never get any response on. So we ended up, our property is split. That we have, you know, some on the, like when you're standing at the fort looking out, we have a chunk at the left, which was primarily designed to be fort parking for events and, you know, possibly talking about putting a storage shed out there so that we can keep some of our equipment and stuff and maybe even having, you know, I don't know. We fantasize about all kinds of things we could build on that. And then, then we got the other track on the ride, which is next to your house.
Yes, and I, we had been trying to buy that from Dr. Cooper. And then I called him and I said, well, the county just bought it last week. And we had been trying for years to try to buy that from him. And you apparently offered much more than what we had been offering him.
I had, I hired a Realtor to give me a kind of a valuation of what, what property would have been worth. And so I used that as my guide for what I offered, but we got a real estate attorney.
And my concern is, it started out, when y'all bought that land, strictly for parking. So now, it's evolved from just parking to, let's put an RV. So once you get, let's say you put the RV there, what's to stop you from saying it's short-term to now it's long-term? I mean, y'all are in control. We live out there and it's us that have to suffer with the decisions y'all make. The consequence falls on us, not y'all. And it seems like y'all don't really care what we have to deal with.
Well, we do, we do care. We do care.
Well, we have complained about lots of stuff.
We're trying to-
And you still don't care.
You know, but our focus is also on the fort and trying to maximize, maximize that county asset. And that doesn't necessarily mean revenue. That's, you know, tourism, people coming into the county, people buying a hamburger and gas and alny on the way to the fort or buying, you know, a water burger and gas, coming through Graham, going to the fort. And it's just trying to keep, get more bodies here in Young County.
What kind of dollars you talking about, all that infrastructure on a RV park like that?
We haven't even got a bid on any of that, have we? No, we're, we're still in the plan. I mean, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't bid it out yet. And then like for something like crawfish and cannons, it would be a severely increased fee structure for big events like that. You know, it would be a nice little fundraiser for the fort for big events like that.
Have you given thought or studied how much revenue we've got a RV park fair, growing to Young County?
We know that we miss out on a lot of opportunities. There's RV groups that go around camping ten or twelve at a time, you know, and they'll go stay at Jacksboro or wherever, a weekend stay. But we know we miss out on a lot. We don't exactly know what that number looks like. And it's not necessarily about revenue generating for Fort Belknap. It's revenue generated by having more people in Young County. It's gas sales, it's restaurant stops, it's, you know, it's just getting, you know, people going to Walmart and sales packs and, you know, Stewards Grocery Store and buying, you know, stuff to grill. And it's, you know, it's about, you know, it's about tourism is what it's, is what our intention is.
My revenue was to Young County, not Fort Belknap, was to Young County.
Well, that would be, yeah, that would be to Young County. I mean, to the fort would be, you know, the sale, rent, renting of the spots.
I would just like to say, you know, I think with most things government, this starts off as a noble idea to, like you said, we want to increase tourism. We want to, we want to do this. We think this will be a good idea for the fort. And on paper, when you say that, it does sound good. But the reality is, as time goes on, it never ends up that way. That these two or three-day stays now will soon, well, you know, if we allow these people who keep asking, can we stay longer? If we allow them to, we'll generate even more revenue. And now we're gonna offer week stays. And then, you know, at some point, because I know it's on the agenda, we're gonna, you know, we've got this solar company that's coming in and there's nowhere for these guys to stay and they're gonna offer us ten, fifteen thousand dollars a month to just rent out all fourteen of them for months on end. And there is no way, because of the revenue that it's gonna, it's gonna generate for the county, that we can pass this up. And the ball is constantly moving when it comes to how government does operations. And I know that most of y'all are probably conservative people, probably watch Fox News just like me and sit around and look at all these other congresspeople that we just yell at constantly about, you know, well, how did they not see it in the beginning that this is how it was gonna turn out? We have, we don't have to look any further than just across, you know, from where the crow flies, maybe five, seven, ten miles to Kenley Park. And how the city of Graham has completely shut down camping there because it ended up in such a disaster. And now we're gonna offer a campground, an RV campground, a small one, fourteen spots, out in the middle of nowhere with no one to police it, other than maybe a Young County sheriff, who would only show up if called, because he's not gonna be driving through there just to keep an eye on it. So again, the idea, I can totally be on board with what you're saying about let's upgrade services at the fort. We wanna offer to allow vendors, we've got these events going on, we need fifty amp service, we need water to some of these spots. I could be on board with that. But this idea that we're gonna have year-round stays, or not allow them to stay there year-round, but that we're gonna have year-round camping, fourteen spots right off the highway across from our beautiful fort, we're gonna end up just like Edelman or Kenley Park.
I don't think you could compare Apple to Kenley Park where you drive in, you put five dollars in a box, an honor box, where this place is gonna have a person that knows every single person coming in and out. It is being police. It's not like you just pull up there and throw your dollar in a mailbox.
Hey, I've got a, I've got, because believe me, I do a lot of TV services for RV parks. I've done basically every one of them at Paulson Kingdom Lake. Security systems and cameras that I have to put up just because these people don't leave. You know, I mean, it's booming business for me. I'm sure at some point, they'll probably have to put a bid out. Hey, we need to get a few cameras around this RV park. And maybe I'll get lucky enough to put a bid in on it, but that's always how it starts. Again, I don't fault y'all. I'm not, this isn't personal attacks on any of y'all, but I just know the way that government operates and it'll just be, well, the bylaws technically said they could stay for two days. But we're getting so much interest, guys. Y'all don't realize the money that we're passing up from all the interest of people that want to stay for a whole week. Okay, now let's, let's open that back up for them. Oh, this guy, you know, they, they really wanna stay here for a month and they wanna rent them all out and it's gonna, we're gonna make thousands of dollars. Well, let's just take a quick vote and we'll only do it this one time, you know. I mean, you guys know it, well, it doesn't matter if it's a county deal, a city deal, or the state deal, it never ends up where it starts. And, you know, I drive by that place sometimes four times a day and I don't want that down the street from my house. We practice at that baseball field and got all our little kids out there. We do the, we got all our kids across the street, whether it's Halloween or what, or Easter egg hunts at the fort. And I don't want it full of people that we don't know in this county just living there, so.
Well, we do have an example for it. We do have the arena. We have spots there that are short-term. They get rented, people come and go. That would be the type of way that it would have to be ran.
Again, like you said, that's not apples to apples. Those people who are staying at the arena are usually there with something to do with rodeo and so they are moving and they, again, where I could agree with you, they just needed the hookups because they were there for the event. And I could agree with that. If you were sitting there saying, hey, we want to offer these new hookups and a dump station, you know, when they're pulling out, they're on the backside of the fort, we wanna give them a dump station, that's great. I could be all for that. I want tourism at the fort. It's a beautiful fort, probably one of the most beautiful in the state of Texas. But this idea that they can just sit and camp out and most of it, you know, one of the issues they had at Kenley Park, I read the article this morning from when the city shut down, was that you'd have people in Young County, whether it be Alny or Graham, where they have gotten thrown out of their house from domestic fights or whatever, and they just go down there and camp. And there, and in that article, it says, there's nothing that DJ Cook could do because once they set that up, it was their dwelling and all he could do is knock. You know, and until you catch them outside, you can't do anything with them. So, you know, again, the premise of what you're wanting to do, I think, is noble and good. I agree, the fort is great and we should showcase it. But setting up a fourteen-spot RV park across the street, I don't think is the way to go about it. Because it won't end up the way that in your head, you're like, this is a great idea. And at some point, you guys are not gonna be here on this board, whether you resign or run again and somebody be, whatever it may be, and you're just gonna be one of us again thinking like, man, that was a really silly decision because it has turned out like Kenley Park.
Well, you know, I think we can compare it to Kenley Park, but I think we could compare it with some other forts. I think we should make some phone calls and see if there's some other places around that has these hoodlums that you're talking about staying for long-term. I think it's very police and I think it's very controlled and I think there's ways that we can make sure that people aren't staying and taking their wheels off and staying there. And I think y'all have some good, good points and I totally agree with the folks.
Then you're gonna have to put somebody else on staff because you cannot count on one person to take care of that. Because there should be two full-time people taking care of the fort as there is and y'all already changed that to one and a half. And I know that for a fact. It takes two to maintain that like it should be maintained. And that's not happening. You're gonna have more responsibility.
How many spots did you have, Lonnie?
I had eleven, fourteen rented cabins and ten spots.
It's gonna be more than what you think on maintenance and upkeep. It really is. And I, too, am just like he is back here. I want to promote it. We love that place. Love to have people, we have people that come from all over the world and it would blow my mind if they would hear about it and come in and we would visit with them. And it's wonderful. You do want that. None of us are against that. But we are against it being across the street and it being a year-round where they come and go. Because in the future, like he said, when y'all might not be on there and it may be a whole new group, things might change and it won't end up being the vision y'all have.
We have to move on to something else.
Yeah.
And it worries me, Jim can't be there twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty days out of the week. If he's not there, what's to stop someone from just pulling in and parking?
You're gonna have to put somebody else on the budget for payroll, which does affect taxpayers. It's not just coming out of the hotel tax to fund this thing.
I'm gonna call the force and see what they're saying. See what they're, I'm gonna, I'll get some feedback on, you know, the Fort Trail.
The Fort Texas Fort Trails, a lot of those will have them on their sites. And they do have larger staff, most of them, and volunteer groups that help monitor those things. They do have them for the events, but it's usually not long-term. Some of them do, like I believe the one in Jacksboro has more long-term. But I promise you, they got more than one person taking care of it.
We are in the planning and discussing stage and that's why we're here today and we wanted y'all's input, y'all's consideration and we're gonna take all that into account. And we're just tableing it today. We're not voting on anything. We're not making any decisions. But you have a plan. I do. It's just utilities and it's nothing to speak to paper with.
One, one, one last question. The forts you're talking about, Young County, Fort Belknap is Young County's fort.
Yes.
And most of the other forts that you're talking about are state-owned.
That is true.
They have two, three, four hundred, maybe even a thousand acres around, around them. So they can have those things that you, you're looking at Fort Belknap being a neighborhood community. It's where people live. And it's fifteen acres in size, I think, so on the maps about what it is. And it has been the effort in the past for the state to take over it. But the state doesn't want it because it's in a neighborhood environment and they won't invest any money on it. Plus, Young County would add- Plus, Young County would add a few hundred acres to it down toward the river and, and, uh, then at that time, they were considered, I don't know if they're considered at all in the fort, but those things have been looked at and you're looking at hundreds of acres that go along with some of these other forts. Just like Fort Griffin, they've got a pretty, pretty good size, RV park. But it's off of the fort grounds to the east side of the highway and that's, they've got facilities.
Not in the neighborhood.
You know, and that's why I vote the other forts that have these things that we're wanting. They're looking at a neighborhood community out here.
I think we're done at the table and discuss and do some more planning and figure this thing out before we make any decisions, so.
May I ask one last question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, will you please keep us informed as to the progress?
I will.
We, you said that before, some of us didn't even know nothing about it. But it hadn't been promoted.
I had a big story to tell.
Nobody said nothing.
Somebody else.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll let you know.
All right, let's move to item number eleven, which is the ten AM open seal bids for the two thousand and three freightliner and two thousand and eight Kinder truck for a reason of one.
We're gonna have a winner from wherever you go.
We're winning.
We're winning, but I received three bids. This one is on the two thousand and eight Kinder. And Paul Myers has committed one thousand five hundred dollars, it's on the two thousand and eight. Yes. And on the two thousand and three, three hundred.
The first one was on the eight.
It was on the eight for one thousand five hundred, yes. This is on the. Two thousand and three freightliner, five hundred and fifty dollars. They're on each of those. Now this bid came in Friday afternoon and is on both of them.
After day three.
It's gonna be one?
The highs.
Okay, neat too. Oh, thirty records. So this is on the two thousand and eight Kinder. Uh, this is David San.
A month.
Nine thousand five hundred. Did he come over here?
Yeah.
We have a winner.
On the two thousand and three freightliner, three thousand five hundred.
David San, I'm getting some votes.
Would you like to make a motion to accept those two bids?
I would take the motion, I will make the motion to accept the ten bids from David San.
Do we have a second to that motion, favor? All in my favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero.
Do that, do it. Winner winner chicken dinner.
Okay, we need to, let's go back to item number three, the tax successor collectors may activity report. And it's in your packets in two thousand and five, so far she's collected four hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars compared to this time last year, she had collected four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. So just a hair behind last year's pace. Let's move to item number four, update on hiring of Capex, Capex resource agreement to work with Young County in regards to the Titus Tapaderas request for a tax abatement in regards to their solar project. Mr. Wiley?
Yes, did you ever get a hold of the, uh, in contact with him?
So, yeah, so, um, he has, he had previously, he, we signed an engagement letter. So he is officially, um, on the job. He asked for several documents, which I sent, uh, the abatement application from Titus. He wanted our abatement criteria, um, he just asked for a bunch of stuff. And one of his first comments was that even though our abatement criteria is current, that it's a little bit dated and that there's some things that we should change. And so he's gonna propose, um, some changes to that. Um, he also said, um, if we would have him, he'll be here next week, um, for an in-person kind of kickoff meeting. So, um, I'll put him on the agenda for next week. And that's all I really have on that.
Good deal. Judge, do we get to say anything about that?
You can.
Yeah. I'll be your consulting for free real quick. And I vote that we do not give any tax abatement to any large corporation trying to come in and ruin Young County with solar panels. Obviously, it's gonna be millions of dollars in operations. And if we're gonna give anybody a tax abatement for their property taxes, it's gonna be the people that live here. And, uh, the idea that y'all are even discussing giving.
Well, tax abatement does not keep them from coming here.
I'm not, again, but the, now they're gonna generate more tax revenue, right? Unless you give them an abatement and cut their taxes, you know, I don't know, what is it, fifty percent usually is what an abatement will give them, so.
It's, it's less than that now, it's kind of, the markets, the market shifted to where it's, it's, it's a lower abatement than that. Is what you're seeing most of these counties doing, a percent, thirty percent.
So if they're gonna come in here anyway, then why do we even need to discuss giving them an abatement?
Here's the deal, we're not just discussing giving them an abatement. The man we're hiring for the job, when we sent the senate for him to look at versus the law firms that usually do abatements, he went to look at what actually was coming into the county with this. He actually wrote, wrote it out, that they are underbeating themselves on the value of it by nearly two hundred million. Uh, so it goes from two hundred million to four hundred million in taxable value difference. If this man can get this part done versus hiring a law firm to do a tax abatement, he come up with a lot more ways that this thing had value to it than any of the law firms did. That's why we didn't hire just applying the law firm to do it because this was somebody that knows the value of these things, he's done more than one or two. He's actually got a little history with it to bring him up to where these people are gonna go fight. If you give, if you, if we gave them an abatement on the two hundred and fifty million, okay, they were gonna go fight it anyway every year on what they pay in taxes. This way, we get the actual value looked at before we ever even think about doing an abatement. And that's why we are, we're trying to hire this guy because he has some history in this.
I, I'm not against the hiring of a consultant, I think that's a very smart thing to do.
I mean, I don't know what it's worth if it, if, no more than anybody else.
Even with that said, okay, the consultant's gonna come in and he's gonna say, hey, these guys are lying. This thing's worth four hundred. Um, then why give them an abatement at all?
Well, if, if it comes down to it, then you both know.
One, one benefit on the abatement is if you do an abatement, you can require them to capture the sales tax here in Young Town, County on all the equipment that they're gonna put in. Whereas if we don't do an abatement, they can capture the sales tax in Houston or somewhere else. So one, one advantage to that is that we can create revenue that we would not get in a cer- in the other circumstance without an abatement. So that, that is, it's not a reason to do it, but that is, that's one advantage of doing an abatement.
Is that a, is that a law or something that, that if you have, if you give them an abatement, you can collect sales tax, if they just come in here and put it in there and you can collect sales tax?
They declare, they kind of, when that stuff comes in, they can kind of declare a delivery point and that's where the sales tax is paid. And our abatement would require them to declare Young County as their delivery point. So.
It's kinda like, I'm like the same thing right now with the internet, when you go buy a product off it. We can get the sales tax off that here instead of where you bought it from. But if we give them an abatement, then we have control. And we can actually realize more money out of it than what we would if we did give them an abatement. But there are those high-end tax lawyers, which there's proof that they do do that. By statute, you've got ten years on a, on a solar system that it has to be attributed and it does it rapidly quick. So if they come in there, if they hire tax lawyers and beat it down even that much more, that's even that much less than we get. But if we can come in here and get a pilot payment out of this deal, we know exactly what we're getting. We have more control of it than what we would have if we didn't. That's where that comes in. And that's why I'm being glad we come across this little boy right here. Because he's telling the co-picture of what it actually is and I just have the picture.
I, again, I totally agree with the consultant, I was not against that. It's the idea that we're gonna give, you know, this multinational corporation, uh, you know, some kind of a property tax break. Uh, when we have, I feel like some of the highest property taxes in Texas, like we're outside Austin and, uh, you know, if we're gonna give anybody a break, it should be the people who live here in Young County and spend their lives and money.
The reason we have such a high tax rate is because we don't have these big corporate taxpayers. You know, the, the places that have the lower tax rate from us have corporate taxpayers. They have a nuclear power plant, they have an Amazon data center, they have a, you know, a, they have, well, we, we don't have any of that. We've got an air tractor, we've got tower and southern bleachers. And outside of that, we just don't have large corporate taxpayers.
If this company comes in and all this works out well, you know, would y'all, which I don't know if this even goes through y'all, um, you know, now that they're bringing in all this made a tax revenue, are we then gonna look back at, okay, now let's cut the actual property taxes in the county? Or is it just gonna be like everything else, is it's like, well, we just got more money to spend now and let's keep it the way it is, again, the way government works?
That's, that's our goal, that's our goal. There's not only this one, this is a two, twenty-two-hundred acre one, but there's a fifteen-hundred acre, eight-hundred acre so far that's on the books to be looked at also. But anything that we can get that will pay that kind of revenue will help lower the taxes. And that's the other thing this guy did, he went back and looked and shown where it looked, we was able to lower taxes because of it. What's gonna happen is, is we can, just be like me here right now, this court cannot raise taxes one dime. But everyone that go out there got your tax deal in the mail, didn't you?
Yeah.
Your valuation went up, didn't it?
Yeah.
Everyone, everybody's valuation went up. Who did that? The state of Texas did that.
No, the Young County appraisal did that.
But who told, who told them to do that?
Yeah, but they, they did, they did.
You guys right here.
No, sir, no, sir.
Are looking at the tax rate that you guys set, they said, we're not gonna get it right there, but raise the evaluations of it. And there's no justification for it whatsoever.
Let me tell you, sir, that's not true.
It is true.
The comptroller of Texas tells those guys what the figure of price on them. And they say it's a hundred and seventy valuation. I guarantee you, I promise you, that's what they do. So the fact is, is they raise evaluation, taxes go up and we don't. But they make, the state of Texas blames us for the taxes going up.
Well, my taxes went up twenty thousand dollars on my house. And then I'm right next to this so-called great solar farm that's gonna come in and my property values is gonna go tanks. Yep, the tax evaluation goes up, how does that work?
State of Texas?
Well, that's.
Well, the solar, the solar farm's not there, so they're not taking that.
I guarantee you, when, if you go look and try to sell your property and, and you say, oh, well, you're gonna have a twenty-two-hundred acre field of glass next to you, my property values is not gonna be the same as it was before this crap came in there.
Your taxes will be.
Yeah, my taxes are going up, but the values are going down.
We're gonna give you a hundred thousand dollar homestead and everybody said, whoop-de-doo. And then they go, oh, and we're gonna raise the value of your property by eighty thousand. You know, it's all just taking from the left pocket, putting it in the right. And.
That's not the trouble by the county, that is the trouble at the state level there.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wiley, while you explained that fall ago, did I understand right that giving a tax abatement would be more valuable than not giving a tax abatement?
Come back again.
That giving a tax abatement would, would bring more money in eventually than not giving a tax abatement?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that math.
Well, let me explain to you, it's like what I said while ago with the man. These big guys out here have high-powered tax lawyers. They come in, they beat the tax rate down. Let's say we don't give them a tax abatement, all of them, let's put all of it at one time, that creates two problems. First problem it creates is you don't want that much value coming in on your tax rate at the same time and driving the tax rate all the way down. Because the next year, whenever you get your, your, uh, tax deal in there, they're gonna go in there and they're gonna downgrade that big time on the, on the taxes. So then we gotta come and raise the taxes back up to get it to where we can get it to where we can live and do what the eighty-something percent that the abatement says we have to do. That's where, when we go in there and get an abatement, we know exactly what we're gonna get. Let's say it's thirty percent that we get to give them an abatement on, we keep the seventy percent. That's a difference in it. But if they come in there and they go in there with high-powered tax lawyers and beat it down, which they do that all the time.
What do we do in two years, like in Fort Bend, Texas, when a hailstorm comes in and destroys all twenty-two-hundred acres of that and they go, well, we're out of money, we're gonna file bankruptcy and move on to another place? Where's the tax revenue come from then, from the abatement?
Well, there won't be one then.
Exactly, so I'm just, you know, we get, we get hailstorms every year.
We do.
They're gonna request a tax abatement for you to pay up their profitability. It's what, that's the only thing a tax abatement does, is, is pay up their profitability on the backs of the taxpayers here.
John, you come back next week when our fellow is here and he'll explain to you what he explained, uh, something.
Well, I might, I might come back.
Okay.
Is the Tapaderas people ever gonna show up?
They will, they will.
Well, why don't they, why don't you invite them here with this guy and, and let them have that discussion and see what, what kind of, uh, you know, if they're coming in here and discounting that half price, I mean, it sounds like to me you're dealing with crooks to start with it. Because they're trying to, to beat you out of two hundred and some odd million dollars.
We won't see the Tapaderas guys until we present, um, un- until we present to them a solar abatement proposal.
Do they have another location they could put it at? If we came in and said, well, you either accept what we give you or you just don't come in?
We don't, we didn't give them the land, they picked the land.
They've come in whether we abate them or not, whether they do, that's up to them. Uh, just like the wind farms, I don't think we should have done an abatement on it when John was on the court because I think they were coming whether we done it or not. But we did give them an abatement, uh, I mean, you were on the court when we done that. Uh, I didn't think we should have given anything. But my opinion, my opinion, I wasn't gonna win that at that time, so sometimes you gotta go with what you got.
You can land out, you're sitting up there.
The misconception is that we just tell them, no, we don't want you, they don't matter, they're gonna come anyway. They own that land, they can do whatever they want to on that land.
They could, but the reason they're looking for a tax abatement is they're going to come to you and say, look at all the great benefits that this has been a bring to Young County. And if you don't give us this tax abatement, then we are not going to come to Young County now.
But here's the difference, if we do nothing and we sit here and we don't give them a tax abatement at all, and this is, and this would have been my mistake on the wind farm. And I would have said that because I would have told them, no. Here's where I would have made my mistake, without any abatement and doing the law of, I would have been giving them the right to come in and if it wasn't for the, if the landowner didn't set up to where they had to take the wind farm down when it was over with, then they could have got by without having anything in a contract for the, the taking down or removal. With us doing that abatement that John was here for, we also set in that abatement rules that they had to set aside funds for road, they had to set aside funds for, uh, to take those wind farm, that windmills down when they're out of commission and not just leave it on the land of them.
We have control with an abatement, if we say, okay, we're not giving you an abatement, you just do whatever you want to. They might go away or they might not, and they just do.
They might go away, or they might not, and they just do whatever they want to. And when the hailstorm comes and destroys it, and they say, we're gone, we're out of here, then there's no cleanup, there's no responsibility, there's no nothing, they just do whatever they want to.
It falls back to the landowner. It's just an insurance policy on our end, on some of this, that I would have missed if I would have just told them, no. And I didn't realize these things at that point on the abatement. And that's why we hired Allison Bass and McGee to, to write that abatement deal for us. I mean, we didn't go into it on our own and write that. And, I mean, that's why you hire counsel, but you said you would be our counsel. Now, we need somebody with experience with those things to see the things that we do miss. And I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave it to the landowner next door to be sitting there to tell... If they come in anyway, and we don't do absolutely nothing, we can't tell them, hey, y'all gotta have a clause in there for cleanup. Y'all gotta have a clause in there that y'all can't abandon the project and walk away. Uh, if we don't do nothing, then that's what we get.
Or the things that are buffering there, we can't see.
So, I mean, I'm not telling you I was right by saying, yes, with everybody else on the court that day. But, and I'm more of it, because I felt like, but at that time, we had a different court, we had different people on the court. And it was gonna get voted in whether I said no or not at that point. And so, uh, but I did learn some things on it, that if we don't react to the process, then we don't have any rule setting to them. It's private property, it's their land, they can do whatever the heck they want with it, and if they don't write the contracts out right, uh, then we can get stuck with something that's an eyesore for the rest of our lives. So that is the one protection you can get in an abatement. So, but it's not that I wanted the wind farm out there at all, but I'm glad we did do an abatement to ensure that we don't wind up with an eyesore out there twenty years from now when a tornado comes through there and rips all the wind farm down. And you got, like over in Jack County, we've got windmills that have been sat there since that last tornado, they're shredded. They ain't touched them. They have not touched them since that tornado come through, that's Jack County. And if you don't do anything, that's what you wind up with. When something destroys it like that.
I'm not against tax abatements for businesses to come in, because it does, certain businesses do come in and spur refunds. It's the same argument with NFL owners building stadiums. You know, give us this big tax break, throw some money in, and we'll generate hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue every year for parlaying. Whatever. I understand, I guess I would have to see, I'm sure like everybody else would wanna see, is, well, what is that real number? And what's it gonna look like the first hailstorm?
That's what this consultant's gonna help us do.
That's what this consultant's...
I'm talking about the core, the consultant. I think that's a very smart move to make. And, uh...
And if the numbers don't work on it, then if, if it's not a, if it's not a good deal for Young County, there's, there's no point to do it. But we've gotta, we've gotta, we've gotta work through the process.
They have to do it.
One other question. What is CapEx charging for their services?
They're gonna charge thirty thousand dollars. That will be basically put in, it'll be part, if... And it's only, it's, it's only payable upon a successful, upon getting an abatement. And then that would be in the contract that they would be reimbursed from or paid through Tyus.
Tyus has committed twenty thousand?
They've committed twenty thousand, but that would be part of, this guy, this guy's more expensive than, than the law firms. But I think we're gonna get a better, I think he's gonna give us a better product, definitely.
So right now, we're ten in the hole?
No, we would, that would be part of our negotiation, is that they would up that twenty to thirty.
But if that negotiation doesn't come through, that comes out of taxpayers' pocket?
We pay them nothing if it doesn't. If we, if we can't get to an agreement... If we, if we can't get an agreement, then, then they would honor the, probably the twenty thousand dollars, and we would pay them twenty thousand dollars to walk away. So we wouldn't, we're not gonna pay them anything out of our, out of our money. All right, we do have a budget workshop we've gotta get to at some point. Any last questions? All right, let's move on to the next item. Item number five, consider the county clerk minutes from the previous meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley and a second for Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Uh, item number six is the treasurer's financial report. Treasurer Malon's not here, so no report. But I would, would point out in the packet that we have, um, some donations for the Young County work crew from Bruce and Kelly Bella? Did I pronounce it right? Hundred dollars, and Ruth Smith for a hundred dollars, so it's a two-hundred-dollar donation. Do we have a motion to accept the donation for the work crew?
Just from the cemetery.
I don't think it said how many, which one did you say?
It's just a work crew donation.
Okay, I'll make the...
Motion from Commissioner Cresswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Craig, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Item number seven, the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers payable, Ms. Roberts?
I don't want to now. Just me. Of course, I have vouchers. The total today is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. And out of the general fund is sixty-four thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents. The main ticket items is gonna be, of course, Rock, that first is sixty-eight thousand. And then we paid a seven thousand dollar to work on the roof and the sheriff's office. Other than that, it's just all regular, nothing special in it today.
Don't move. Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shuk, all in favor? All right, any opposed? You say?
I oppose it, yeah, but that ain't all my fault, is it?
It's my fault. What's happening to you?
I'm hearing...
Motion, motion passes five-zero.
Also, Penny Byrne at the extension office is requesting, she's, well, first off, she's got some out-of-state travel. It's in Grand Rapids, Michigan, professional development, and it, it isn't until October, but she has to secure an airfare down, so come out of this budget for six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. But first to approve the out-of-state travel.
She was talking about that last week in the budget thing, so I'll make a motion to accept that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Okay, item number eight, discuss and consider entering into an interlocal agreement with Throckmorton County, where Young County would provide monitoring services to Throckmorton County. Um, I'm gonna present this with Cliff Blackstock, and Cliff is here. So basically, Cliff reached out to me the other day and said that Throckmorton does not have anyone who does supervision and monitoring in the county. And they've got somebody who, it turns out, he's not gonna get out. But they had somebody who they thought was gonna be able to make bond, and they didn't have any way to put an ankle monitor, any way to monitor him. And he asked, um, if I would put together an interlocal agreement. And so, uh, in your packet, I drafted an interlocal agreement to where, uh, Young County would provide monitoring services. Uh, it'd be, it's a two-year agreement. And, um, if you go to the back page, it has a fee schedule, and it's, um... It's not crazily aggressive, but it's a, it's a little more aggressive than what we charge people here in Young County. The thought being, it's a little harder to provide out-of-county services. So, for example, um, sixty-month-a-month, sixty-dollar-a-month bond supervision fee, that's per statute. That's, that's, that's what everyone charges for that. Um, ten-dollar-a-month interlock fee, uh, that's per statute. We actually don't charge that in Young County, but we would charge that over there, although I doubt they would ask us for interlock, but put it on there just in case. Um, forty dollars for drug tests, that's a little bit more. We charge thirty dollars here in Young County for drug tests. Um, a seventy-five-dollar ankle monitor setup fee, we charge fifty dollars setup fee here in Young County. Four hundred and fifty-dollar ankle, ankle monitor deposit per device, which would be refundable upon the return of an undamaged equipment, less any uncollected fees and cost to repair or replace the equipment. Um, that's a little bit, we do a four hundred dollar deposit here in Young County, so this is a little bit more that we would, um, that we would charge for that. Of course, that would be refunded, but the nice thing is if anyone's behind on payments, Cliff, he can deduct that out of that, um, out of that deposit. Ankle monitoring fee deposit, ten dollars a day. Here in Young County, we're charging five dollars a day. Uh, the ally program, which is, um, on these ankle monitors, you can set it up to where, for example, I'm gonna use you as an example, that somebody was abusing you, and they were, basically, there's a judge's order that they could not be within five hundred feet of you. They could put your house in there, or they could put your cell phone in there, and then this ally program would monitor where you are, and it would monitor where this ankle monitor is. And if they got within a certain window of view, you would start getting text alerts.
It also follows your cell phone. So if they come near you anywhere, it, it's gonna...
So it's, it's a safety thing, and it's, and it's an optional item. It costs us a dollar a day to put that on. We charge in Young County a dollar fifty per day for people that we put on it. Um, I would, I'm proposing that we charge, um, anyone we would do this service for out-of-county, two dollars a day. I also put a mileage reimbursement at the current IRS business use rate, which would, uh, for example, if Cliff had to go to Throckmorton County or had to go somewhere else, that there would be a, a reimbursement to it. Um, so this has not been proposed to Throckmorton County yet, this exact schedule, but... Um, and again, it doesn't look like we're necessarily, the incident, the, the reason we were doing this may not happen, but I think they would like to have an interlock, interlocal agreement. They'd like to have the option to be able to put someone on ankle monitor. Cliff says he's willing to do it if we have an agreement. Do you have anything else to add to that, Cliff?
We did a few years ago, had Baylor County reach out to us for the same thing. It was somebody that, that had been housed over here in Young County in jail, and they thought they were gonna bond out. Uh, they, they wanted the same type of situation. And the reason Throckmorton contacted me was because they've got an agreement with Stevens County, uh, to house their prison. That's where this guy is at right now. And they thought he was fixing to make bond, and that, apparently, they, they're very worried that he is going to cause harm to the alleged victim. Uh, but then they found out that they could no-bond him, so they no-bonded him. He's still, he's not getting there anytime soon, as far as we know.
I, I do know they have football conditions on paper over there, and they talked to me about it. And their judges would have been trying to keep up that he actually does not need to do that.
Yeah.
So I, I know they would be grateful for that.
That'd be a good, it'd be a neighborly thing to do. We have the infrastructure to do it. Cliff is willing to do it.
Would it require us getting any more ankle monitors?
Do what, sir?
Do we need more ankle monitors than what we got on hand?
No, at this time, we're in good shape.
Well, I know we are for Young County, but I don't know how much it might increase with their, their county. Do we limit, how many are we allowed to go over there?
I mean, it's not hard to get more ankle monitors if we need them.
Here's the deal. If, if this becomes a bigger issue than we think it is, we'll have to revisit that. The thought is, it would be one person.
I'll do, I'll, I'll have more people in a week come to our judge of what Throckmorton would have on you.
Yeah.
This would be something, if, if we did this, and we would just do the billing like I did the inmate housing billing down Bill County.
Yes.
Can I take a short recess?
Yes, me too. Well, let's finish this item. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the interlocal agreement? The proposed, to, to, to approve the proposed interlocal agreement with Throckmorton County to provide monitoring services? We have a motion from Commissioner Craig, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. All right, I'll send that to Judge Hodges, and we'll see if we can get a deal. All right, let's take a, let's try to take a quick, as quick as possible. Hope one of today was good.
You had too much coffee this morning.
Yes, I did.
And the whole, I almost think we gotta stop putting this stuff on the agenda, because... I'm working on the budget here in the man.
Yeah, we did clear...
We did your budget already, yeah. We actually... Yeah. I'm chilling.
We up?
Yeah.
You ready to get it back?
Yeah.
Let's go over it.
I'll see y'all later. Nobody knows what's going on.
I, uh, dude, you should go with an ankle monitor. I don't know.
So Penny, they did approve that, right? And subdue what you need to, and break this receipt? I'll, I'll go ahead and look at like...
I don't think he might have really watched it. Not bad. It's not bad, but it's indicative of what you're... I'm like, I'm like a customer, we might as well hear it.
You're gonna put on this here.
And I'm already spent on money on the whole... I don't need that.
I said a watch, it's expensive. She's a player, right?
A big...
Hey, 'cause it's not... Yes, they have.
He lost that ring.
You're working, man, right now.
You have a ring here? Oh, I already got it ready. It's range-like, I can't... I thought the version just said we were working for that one. It's blocked out. Then I think we just had a discussion. I'd be more focused on Australia. Hey.
You know, we're talking in our favor. Please. Take that thing out, take one of them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's clean, though. It's, it's, it's... You know, like, you should get me some time to handle papers. I have to read this one. We'll just have to read this one. Who's that here? As long as it's not as far as my... I don't think we can... It's okay, it's a issue you don't have.
Like you.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm excited.
Oh, yeah, no, you're on the net. That's, that's unfortunate. Oh, I should have bought some stuff instead.
You all bored? Does that work?
Kind of a place to deal with that.
Um, it depends on if they consider themselves in a kill shelter. Um, or if it's, they, they...
Are we in no-kill shelter?
Unfortunately, we aren't. Oh, we would love that, but it's not possible with the number of intakes that we take. It's all the termination, and then, yeah, because we're an open intake, so if somebody has something that needs to come to us, we don't turn it away.
You gonna do this, please?
No kill can say, nah, we're gonna knock that out, we're not taking it in.
You got a little review?
No, typically, we don't. Um, we're pretty... That's fine. I'm one for it. To what? You show me. We haven't, seriously, we haven't really given reviews to us. We ask y'all to wait a couple of days here and there, like when they know what they're gonna need to get in, when they're gonna get the directions. Yeah, always. But we're still... I mean, like our owner surrenders, we're, we're up front these days. We don't have that open. So technically, if they comes in, we're probably putting it down. I mean, if we don't put it down, we'd have to take something that we've already been in, was prepared for, for... Not funny. Yeah, just bring it in, bring it in, put it down three days later. That's the best thing. Yeah, I mean, sometimes if we have somebody that has something, you know, we will ask, you know, can you give us a week, can you give us a few days? I think when the pyrenees were coming in, our freezer was also full. We had to get a freezer to get, because it can euthanize anything, until we had a freezer to get.
How are you gonna wait for that contract?
I'm terrible, pretty much. She's not nice to that whole toy. She's a classic.
If you see Jimmy?
Which also loved those pyrenees that coming in.
Yeah, those three, you love it?
Because y'all brought what, like two, three of them?
We caught three.
And then another, yeah, another lady didn't listen.
I said, "They've been there every time."
Six or eight months later.
They usually have a little thicker hair.
More flesh, more flesh hair.
They gotta curl.
Lot.
I might start doing mine.
And she's like, "Oh, okay."
Get me a little tighter.
Probably hair can be great.
That girl be a reed? I thought about that one time. Just a puppy, can't have that. That girl in the pool.
My gosh, come on.
Margie's all about that.
Jamie, I'm sorry, this is, I didn't know this was gonna drag into this.
Yeah, I'm enjoying it. Yeah, this lady, she's a big, like, old, and she tracked all those people, and then, and then she's like, "Have a..."
Neither one?
You have to print, or they can load hatch fingers, because who's missing not, I don't know.
Jamie, or Jimmy and Alan. Three for one.
She can go out and get them deep in an area, and then, like, have, uh, call it a trip.
Hey, can you call Alan and Jimmy and ask them where they are? Please?
That might be a time person. And I'm watching different episodes of her doing that fencing around, and then going in and getting something on, and then going over. I mean, that was, I guess the amount of people that were just by the dark, kind of knocking down and taking them to the shelter. It's only dark friends are hard to, because you lose them. It's bigger, actually. I don't know, it's kind of like Alan.
Mm-hmm. They're not outside in the hallway, are they? Oh, there's Jimmy. There's Alan. Yeah, I hope y'all, you look wonderful after powdering your nose. Thank you, I appreciate that. It's important, you know, well, cameras. Once you heal. Okay, that's good. Alright, item number nine, discuss and consider the Young County Humane Society's request for increased funds and operating costs. They sent us a letter requesting that we increase our donation from twenty thousand to forty thousand, and stated here that this is, we've been at twenty thousand since two thousand eight. Come on up and let's have a talk.
My name is Jennifer Spencer. I served on the shelter board as secretary for, since two thousand twenty-one, so... Um, I have with me Amanda Shabok and Shelby Brogdon. Shelby's our director at the shelter, and they're here to answer any questions that y'all may have. And as you know, the mission of the Humane Society is to provide homeless pets in the community and county with a safe, clean, and caring environment until rescue can be secured or they are returned to their owners. Public education is another big part of our mission. We're passionate about the programs that we offer through Young County. Uh, low-cost and spay and neuter clinics, vaccination services and microchipping. Um, that's been a big, uh, part of our program. And we started bringing the pets clinic to Graham, from Wichita Falls in two thousand eighteen, and we've spayed and neutered over two thousand seventy-nine animals, um, that, at the Graham location, at our shelter there. Um, they average about forty, uh, vaccination and microchipping, um, appointments once a month. They're averaging about forty of those. Uh, we also do regular transports to Wichita Falls, um, for residents that can't afford spay and neuter here. They do have a low-cost program through Wichita Falls, and so we work with pets clinics, um, and that's countywide. That's, anybody, you know, in your county can take advantage of that. And we're just here today to respectfully request continued increase, continued and increased funding, because we live, we believe the Humane Society, it's an essential part of, of the public safety in Young County. And it keeps strays and disease off of the roads, um, out of the county. And the shelter provides a safe place for stray and surrendered animals to be held until they can either be reunited with their owners. Uh, when sick or injured animals are brought in, they are immediately evaluated and receive appropriate medical care. Um, in two thousand twenty-four, we, the Young County brought in a hundred and eighteen animals to our shelter. And as of June twelfth of this year, that number's already at fifty-one. And I do have intake numbers, um, in the package that I've provided. Um, you know, we, we take in almost four hundred dogs, or four hundred animals a year. Um, you'll also see a financial summary of the last couple of years. You can look on there, and you can see that our donations, our private donations, they are up. Um, but unfortunately, everything in life has gone up, so, um, our medicines, our food supplies, veterinary care, that's all more than doubled. I've also included, um, a copy of the current county contract, and I say current, current as of two thousand eighteen. So this is, um, just been looked over. Um, I believe Mr. Bull was actually on the county, was the Young County judge whenever we last revised and agreed to, you know, had a valid contract. And, um, I'd just like to close my little spiel here, um, just saying that this is personal to me. I mean, I was born in Olney, raised in Graham, I'm a Young County girl. We do this because we love the animals, and we wanna make Graham and Young County and Newcastle and all of this around, the whole county a safe place, and, um, be able to be a safe haven for these animals, until we can get, um... Anyway, we would like you to, um, you know, look at the contract, if you have any questions, any, um, suggestions. You know, our, um, our goal is, you know, like I say, just to keep in that operating budget. We have made some improvements at the shelter the last couple of years through, um, some private donations. We built on, um, an intake room that, in the cases of, if we pick up a hoarding case or things like that, we can safely house those animals. Um, we have a place to keep those separated from our other animals. Um, we have had, we purchased a new transit van, transport van, that we, um, offer, you know, to take and have, um, you know, medical being advanced and things that we can do. So we're, um, at the point now that all of our extras that we feel like we want to do are kind of being put on the side, because now our monies and even our private donations are going to just the cost of supplies and daily maintenance.
How often does the sheriff's department bring the work crew out to work at the Humane Society?
Um, they come out every day, every weekday except Wednesday, I believe, and they're out there for two-ish hours.
And y'all don't consider that a donation on your, y'all, y'all don't monetize that as far as part of... How do y'all account for that?
Under the, I think it's accounted for under the volunteer. I think all of our community service is considered under volunteer.
I can't remember what the number was, but at one point Travis gave us kind of what that actually cost, and it's, it's a significant number, and it takes away from, you know, the other things that they're doing at the arena, at the, at all of the cemeteries that we deal with. Yeah, that's a, that's a big deal. And the other thing, and it's happened at least twice since I've been on the court, we've had an issue where y'all wouldn't take one of our animals that we had. And that has happened, I've been on the, I've talked to you about it, I've talked to board members about it, and, I mean, they're just where, it was just a hard no. And I'm glad y'all came, because we actually discussed y'all last week, and we were contemplating, you know, options of, do we, do we, do we support a Wichita Falls, or do we support them in the wells, because we can, someplace that we can actually get our animals in. Go ahead.
I've never given a hard no, never to the county. I mean, it is in our contract that we can, but I haven't.
That's not how I remember it going about a year or so ago.
Are you referring to the, um, the pyrenees that the sheriff's office rejected?
I don't remember what county animal it was, but I think it's come up twice since I've been on the court, to where we couldn't get an animal.
So I know on the case in the pyrenees that were running wild and gloving, we asked if they could give us until the next week, being all kennels were full, all intake was full, and our freezer was full. So we weren't able to euthanize until we got our freezer dumped. So we just asked for a few days, since we had a decent number of animals coming in, but I, I've never given a hard no. I think the only thing...
I think it had something to do with the fact that they came and they had a kennel in the back of a pickup truck, and y'all did not think that that was an appropriate way to transport a dog, and...
We, we've taken in several from the back of the pickup truck. We took in a litter of puppies that came in in the summer in the back of a truck on a black bed liner and a black kennel in a hundred and four degree temperature, and we nearly lost one of them, um, due to overheating. They were sucking the water off of the wet towels we were putting down to try to cool them off. But, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what we gave a hard no to. The only thing I've given hard no's to, um, in the last years are out-of-county animals, because we don't have the money to deal with other counties' animals that are coming in, and we get out-of-county calls to take them.
Sure, what I'm talking about, Chris?
Yeah, so the, the pyrenees, we got a plan together. When we finally captured, brought the pyrenees in, also those others, of course, straight we brought them. Doesn't sound like refusal, he's talking about us. A couple others, like you said, that y'all didn't have the space for. And we had to find, we had to find other means, not enough to fuck them up. I know we used other, we used other resources for those animals, but we didn't drop them off.
I know there was, uh, somebody called about a case, a possible seizure case, and we always ask if, uh, law enforcement has to go in on a big seizure, if they can call in assistance through air or one of the other groups, because they will actually provide free, uh...
They got resources.
Yeah, they, like, even, we can take them into our shelter, but they will provide the workforce for free to take care of all of the seizure cases. We had a seizure case of twenty-six that came in from Olney, and they actually came in and ran all the care of the seizure dogs, all twenty-six of them, so that our staff was able to continue doing what we do every day, instead of us having to look at euthanizing everything in the shelter to make room to house twenty-six dogs and care for them. Um, I, I don't know, you'd have to bring to me what it was. I, I mean, there was a, like I said, a call about a seizure case, and I, I think at that time, uh, you guys had also talked to...
This is same landlord, he had been by situation, I believe it was.
A bite situation?
Yes.
We don't have the capabilities to hold, uh, quarantine for rabies on ten days. That would have to go to, like, countryside or something.
Yeah, all of the bite quarantines go to a vet.
Even the city's bite quarantines go to a vet. We don't have the capabilities to house that for ten days.
We're not statement expected or anything for, for holding.
How long do y'all keep your animal before you euthanize them? What's your ratio?
Uh, it totally depends. It depends on space, it depends on temperament of the animals already in the shelter and the animals coming in. It depends on their health. Currently, I, we tell people that are owner surrendering that they're likely to be put down immediately, uh, because everything is full. And so that's the choice of, is what's coming in more adoptable than what we've already got in the shelter, and that we've already spent money vetting, getting vaccinations, all of their intake, spay and neuter, all of that. So it has to be a pretty spectacular animal coming in for us to put down something that we've already spent money on, uh, unless we can get a rescue. If we can get a rescue involved, we're definitely holding, we get a rescue in there. Uh, we are required to hold strays seventy-two hours if they do not have ID, and five days if they do, to give an honor time to come in. But everything else is based solely on what's going on with each individual animal and space at the shelter.
I noticed here, y'all got fifteen thousand for twenty-four. We do have another five thousand coming, because it is twenty thousand, you good deal.
How would you characterize your relationship with the sheriff's office?
Uh, I mean, I, I don't know. I haven't had a whole lot of interaction lately. I would say it was, it's been tense for a while.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I would say it's hostile. It's, I'm saying, but what, I mean, it's a, it's a, it is a damaged relationship, and I think that there's some frustration on the county side in that, yes, we do invest some cash into it, but what we really invest are hours, man-hours out there in time, and, um, I guess, the sheriff's office and in my conversations with them, don't feel like that's appreciated, and that it's not a, it's not a, it's not a good working relationship. It's a hostile relationship.
I wish you would talk to the inmates that come out and work there, and the, the deputy that comes out with them, um, as far as appreciated or not.
Well, I mean, that's, when, when CJ was trying to drop a dog off, and y'all told him no, he couldn't drop a dog off, and, you know, and he was, what was CJ's, what was his title, or what rank was he? Lieutenant, and, you know, when he's trying to drop an animal off, and y'all say no, he doesn't know what to go do with the animal at that point.
I wish I knew which animal we were talking about.
Well, I mean, I, I had a phone call with you about this. I don't know every animal, but, but we, we, we talked on the phone several times and...
I actually thought we left our conversation on good terms. I thought, when you called, I thought we had settled.
I just, I'm just, I just know that there's been this back and forth, and I feel like...
A lot of the reason why we're here today is to rebuild and reconsider all of those working relationships that we have, um, because I know as a board member, we appreciate those workers that come out daily, and, um, you know, they're doing the dirty work. I mean, they're cleaning and, you know, the stuff that nobody wants to do.
And everyday citizen would not want to do that.
And our staff is...
Right, and so, and in return for that, I would, I would think y'all would be bending over backwards to help us when we have an animal that want to come in there, and not fighting with us about whether an animal will come here or not.
If it's a bite case, we don't have the state licensing to hold a dog for ten days, so we have to say no.
We don't, we don't...
We can't hold those.
We don't bring them back.
I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand which case we're talking about. I can't...
There's a couple. I'll have to look it up. I can't remember what I was talking about.
Let me know, so I'll know what we...
You have a relationship with them, would have had one. It's like she said, it's been tense, and I wouldn't mind adding that, you know, it's... We want to have a working relationship.
Yeah, absolutely, sure, yes. So let me, let me ask you this.
We prefer to, in a sense, if, if we're gonna get backlash in public, uh, comments made back towards us on social media for using your services on cases, later, later, complicated cases, that's what looks bad on us when you explore an animal that way, for whatever reason, if there's any kind of benefit whatsoever, regardless of what the objective is, it still looks negative to the community.
Now, when y'all were, the signs y'all put up at the polling locations, that looked like that was a direct attack on Bevco.
So that the, the perspective that the public sees...
But that wasn't the show that put those up.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, that had nothing to do with the shelter, that was...
But the perspective...
Was it a board member?
But the perspective, was it a mortgage?
No.
But how that looks to the community.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, absolutely. You agree. And that's, and, and that's
And I've never had any issues with any staff. I make sure every time I'm there, and we've worked and staff comes up, it's always enough to help and reduce them. I've never had any issues with them.
Yeah, and I absolutely, I, I mean, we have seen it. I mean, we, we have lived it. We know, we, you know.
When that particular case came to
We, stuff has come through and Oh, right, I know. Uh, yeah, and we absolutely.
We don't want to go through that again. So, so for us, the tension has been there and it's been easier for us to utilize other people.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to go through that.
Well, and I And that's what, can I ask you a question? Would that be something that you, because I said you're like the animal person for the sheriff's office? Is that an assumption?
Yeah. I was gonna say
Okay, sure. So the ones that are like directly involved that do most of the animal cases, would that be something that you and say the sheriff and whoever else that we need to sit down and talk to so that we might commit the, the intention? Would that be something that you guys would be willing to do?
We started the talk with the judge. We've had meetings before where he came here, sat face to face in that conversation.
So that maybe we need to keep going on those.
We do, and that's what we want. We need that for that county. We don't want to have to drive to Jacksboro to take an animal. We want to have a, we have a shelter. This is, this is what we want to use. Like, we don't want to go to Wichita, Marwells or Jacksboro. We don't want to have to do that. This is what drives, that's what man-hour to put into it. You know, that's what costs for, for our county. We want to minimize that as much as possible. We need to. We have a shelter here. Why can't we utilize that as efficiently as possible? We need to do that. I mean, that work relationship, but this works, this goes both ways.
So, yeah, so then, I mean, like, we're willing to sit down and talk. If you guys are willing to come to the table and talk, maybe we can work through, through all these things and figure something out.
Yeah, we really hope we can do that.
So, before we leave, I'll give you my phone number and we can figure out a meeting time, place, and we can figure this out.
And I'll, I'll be, to be honest with you, our work crew deputy that goes over there and spends those hours in the morning, so far, I don't know how everyone knows their dress is going on.
Yes.
It is really hard for us to keep them there and not take care of quicker.
Well, I mean, he does, we, we listen to different projects when he
We have complaints coming by wire.
He's been talking about the low and, but then I know he was in the hospital, so that's even further behind he's gonna get.
Makes it harder.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I make a personal, not, not accounting, I know we have a relationship that we need to work out, but on a personal note, I have a shelter dog and four shelter cats and all my kids have volunteered at the shelter. And on a personal note, when I, when I drove a tow truck, I had an issue with a pit bull that we were impounding a car. And I made a personal phone call to Heather and she came and, and got the dog out because it was like out of control. She got it out of the car and, and then took it to the shelter.
Yeah, me and they
And so, my thinking is, we haven't given them any additional money since two thousand eighteen and the way the cost of living is, I mean, we could give y'all a hundred thousand dollars and it still wouldn't be enough. But I, I think that it needs to be increased, uh, from a personal standpoint.
I mean, we give them more than what the number says.
I agree.
And the sheriff The sheriff would actually like a little relief on that because what it's done is, is such a demand on his office that he's behind on everything else that that work crew's doing. And we have less and less work, work crew people because the people we're getting are not people you want to let out on a work crew. And so we have our, 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 our man, man-hours are shrinking, but our responsibilities are growing. And so he would like, he would like some relief on that. If we were, you know, one of his suggestions was if we gave him more money, then maybe they could use that money to hire somebody to give him a little bit of relief. But, but it has been, every time I've heard it come up, it's come up in a very negative light, that there is this, this budding heads and it's not a partnership. This is how, how it's being conveyed to be from the county side.
Yeah.
So I, I'm hearing one side of it and I do understand that. But it is a, almost a toxic relationship.
That is one reason, I mean, one main reason why we wanted to address, other than the funding, that this, that working relationship be reestablished to a healthy state of being.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, just
Yes, because they know where there was an issue, a big issue
Yeah. in the county. And it did from a person, I don't want to toss anybody under the bus, but from a person, there was a lot of social media posts. And we're trying, we're putting that behind us, but we need to move forward. Everybody needs to move forward from that. Like, it's not going to do us any good, it's not gonna do them any good, and it's not gonna do the citizens of Young County any good if we can't all work together.
Have y'all ever, I mean, I, I don't think y'all, I've ever seen, the contract states that you just, you give us financial statements once a year. I don't know if I've ever seen them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anything is ever
We have it available
Yeah.
at all times. And I think we invited everybody to come out to the shelter too, anytime we can give you a tour. You can come out.
But can I make a suggestion on the funding? Um, jury donations, I think that that can be added by commissioners for jurors to donate their pay to the Humane Society. And I know we've looked into it a few times, but we can't do anything in our court. It has to be voted on by commissioners. But it's quite a bit of money that would come through and help.
And at this, you know, in these days, you know, with everything going up, I mean, eighty dollars is appreciated. Um, like I say, we, we're at the point now, we've made improvements and stuff to the shelter and we've done, um, some really good things. Um, but whenever all of our funding now is going to just our operating, um, budget and then not even really meeting our operating costs. That's when we have to start reevaluating and re, um, assessing, you know, even though, like I say, private donations are up. A lot of times those are specified for certain things, um, and so we have to respect those wishes. Um, we take into consideration every dollar, you know, through, um, just trying to educate the public, um, spays and neuters and vaccinations and, you know, it's, we try to make, we've been trying to make a presence in the community. Um, we've, you know, attended farmer's markets, we've done, um, pet events, um, you know, as much as we can, so.
And are y'all looking to the public?
Yeah.
Like anybody can just walk in?
Uh, they call us when they get the day.
They typically need a
We, we ask for an application prior to coming in to adopt so we can have a pre-approved when they come in and meet instead of walking the kennels and having all the dogs look like morons hitting the kennels and barking. Um, we ask for appointments for drop-offs, uh, though we don't always get them. They call at the gate, we've got a dog we need to get rid of. We don't turn them away. Um, but we do keep the gate closed. Um, we started that during COVID, prior to COVID, where our gates broken all the time. Generally, um, at, we close at five, at four thirty to four forty-five. We could get every owner surrender that we were getting for the day at four forty, four, four thirty, four forty-five. And our staff would be there at seven, eight o'clock doing intake on all the animals and finding places to put them. Uh, so we've kind of, the gates have slowed down that, that big influx of animals that all come in at one time. Uh, because we've had several cases where our intake fills up, animal control fills it up, whatever, and then we have more and more and more coming in. And we literally had dogs in the bathroom, in the break room, in the office, in kennels, waiting for intakes and finding a place to put them back in our kennels. So that kind of gives our staff a little sanity breaking up the times that things come in. But generally, if, and we have, we let the doctors in too without an application. We encourage them to do an application first, but if they, they're at the gate and they actually come in, we'll, you know, as long as I've got staff available at the time to do it. Sometimes we're doing, we're, sometimes we're scattered with intake. We, you know, uh, vaccinations, whatever, I just have to have the staff available to work with them.
I was, my suggestion would be, because we don't, we're gonna be working on the budget through the end of August, so we've got a lot of time to work on this. My suggestion would be that the sheriff's office and the Humane Society get together, have some meetings, see if we can come up with some sort of common ground and on how we're gonna operate going forward because, um, you know, it's a, that's a, that's a big part, a big part of us supporting you is, is working with our, with our law enforcement and being our partner in where we can take our animals. So, do you think, Chris, do you think you and Travis and your team could get with the Humane Society and we can have, if we could come to some sort of meeting of the minds? I, I don't mind considering changing our level of support, but I hate to change our level of support. If, if the service we're receiving is going down, I hate to, I hate to contribute more when there's other places that this money can go. Because, I mean, we do have a finite pool of money that we're dealing with. And everybody, everybody wants more. I mean, it's, but
Absolutely.
Um, I, this needs to be a partnership.
Absolutely.
So, does that sound like a good place to leave this?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, versus the, really quick and we'll get to you. I'm so sorry. Thank you for your patience. Um, item number ten, ratify the First Amendment to the jail space per day agreement with Liberty County on inmate housing. This is something that, um, we agreed to. I just, it's been executed by Liberty County and I'd like a motion to ratify the executive agreement. We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley. We have a second. Second for Commissioner Craig. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider burn restrictions. Is that a no action?
Fire and all.
Fire and all. All right. Shall we start our